Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Ms. Weave. Mr. De Liberto.
Here.
And Mr. Klein.
I believe the one announcement that we should make is that there was an executive meeting prior to this meeting.
Discuss collective bargaining.
Oh, we discussed collective bargaining, and this meeting is being recorded for quality assurance purposes. And the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the approval of the minutes.
No move.
Second.
Any... Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Do we have anybody sign up today for public comment?
Maggie Wilson?
Hi, my name is Maggie Wilson, and I'm in the fifth grade at Chembert's Villa Elementary School. I was really disappointed to find out that after bringing back the French language classes, it was taken away from those students who had... that had signed up. When I get to middle school, I really want to be able to take French rather than Spanish, German, or Mandarin. I asked my friends, and everyone I've talked to said it would be great if French was offered. French is the only language taught in every country of the world, and it is spoken by 220 million people. It is one of the primary languages used by the United Nations, the International Red Cross, the Olympics, and a majority of other international businesses. When I grow up, I want to be a dancer. French is the language of cooking, fashion, art, culture, music, and architecture. Quakertown has recently expanded the arts program with the addition of the dance studio at the high school and the strings teacher at the elementary schools. Adding the French language back into our program should be the next step in showing support for those of us that want a career in the arts. On behalf of me and the many other Quakertown students that are interested in learning French, please come up with a plan to bring it back and keep it going. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Julia Henry?
Hi, nice to see you again. My name is Julia Henry, and I'm an eighth grader at Sherry Middle School. I am here again to ask the same questions that I asked at the last school board meeting. How did the course offering letter get mailed to students' homes offering French without a plan? How did 58 students sign up for French without a plan? What has been discussed to date to plan for French I at the high school? I have high hopes for this district. I know at Richland, the teachers promote the leader in me. Part of the leader in me is learning about the seven habits. One of the seven habits is begin with the end in mind. I know my college and career goals. I am trying to begin with the end in mind. Unfortunately, QCSD is not fully preparing me for my career. There is a college and career readiness roadblock in my path. How can I begin with the end in mind? I could understand if my peers and I were asking to learn an obscure subject. French is as readily available as a course offering in Bucks and Montgomery County, but not here in QCSD. Back to the leader in me, another habit is think win-win. Adding French to the QCSD curriculum should be thought of as a win-win. We, the students, will benefit, as will QCSD. The benefits to the district will far outweigh any hurdles it may take to put the plan in motion. The district sends mixed messages to us as students. We are taught begin with the end in mind, but when we, as students interested in careers related to French, we can't begin with the end in mind here at QCSD. Think win-win. I am willing to think win-win when it comes to adding French to the QCSD curriculum. Are the administrators and the school board thinking win-win? This is a win-win situation. How can we work together to bring French to the Quakertown Community School District for the 2019 to 2020 school year? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Henry?
Hi again, Michelle Henry, Richland Township. I wanted to just bring up some points. I did send some emails, and I heard back from two board members. Thank you. Again, I'm back with the "I don't know how to get any answers." And I did come to the Education and Curriculum Committee meeting. So one suggestion or request, if it's going to be canceled, if you could tweet it or something, that would be helpful, because we did come at six. We did not know that it was canceled. So it would be a welcome and kind gesture just to kind of let it be known that it was canceled.
I'm sorry that happened to you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. McCucci brought up a good point the other night, that we are in Pennsylvania. We are in Quakertown, Pennsylvania. I will be sending you a graphic, because the truth is that, business-wise, in the state of Pennsylvania... And I'm not trying to take away from any other language. I'm just trying to show that French has relevance here. And the only way I know to do that is to look at what is being offered and how it relates to where we live, which is Quakertown, Pennsylvania. So as far as international business development and investment in the state of Pennsylvania, Chinese companies have 84 locations in Pennsylvania, providing 2,594 jobs. French companies have 521 locations in Pennsylvania, providing 49,091 jobs. In... As far as rankings, China ranks 17th for the total number of firms in Pennsylvania. France ranks 5th for the total number of firms in Pennsylvania. China ranks 22nd for the total number of jobs in Pennsylvania. France ranks 2nd for the total number of international jobs in Pennsylvania. So that's wonderful that you want to have Mandarin. I don't want you to take Mandarin away. There are students that are interested in it. However, we live in Pennsylvania, and in Pennsylvania, France is more relevant than China. So I'm not understanding why we wouldn't want to be more relevant. That's what I don't understand. I'm going to send you all of those numbers so that you're not having to memorize them. But 22nd versus 2nd? It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense. And my question is, does that make sense to you? It's 2nd. France is the second-leading company, international company, providing jobs in Pennsylvania. Think to yourself, how many of you went to high school in Pennsylvania and you still live in Pennsylvania? So I totally get the global perspective, and globally, France is very relevant. But I wanted to go to Mr. McCucci's point, where he said, you know, we do live in Pennsylvania. How... How relevant is Mandarin in the state of Pennsylvania? Well, when it's ranked 22nd, it's not as relevant as France, that's ranked 2nd. And I really think that, as representatives for the children, the children should be listened to. I don't know how you cannot explore this when it's gotten this far. The only reason that I can think of is that someone doesn't want it to happen. Someone doesn't want it to happen. But if it's 22nd versus 2nd, I think you need to take another look. I sent an email. I sent three emails. One of them was a way... You know, I don't have all of the answers, but I do think, working together, why don't we try to think of this as a win-win? How can this be a win-win? How can we figure out a way? How can we work together? Because it is the second-ranking international country providing jobs in the state of Pennsylvania. Someone also brought up about when Mandarin started. I would... I would really like to know the numbers of when Mandarin started, how many kids took Mandarin I? Because 58 kids signed up to take French I. I don't think 58 kids signed up to take Mandarin I. And I heard something about however many students are taking... Like, I think Mr. McCucci even said, is Mandarin really more popular than French here? Well, you don't offer French here, so of course there's more Mandarin students than French students. But my question is, I would really like to know the numbers as far as how many students took Mandarin I the first year? Because there is a huge interest here, and it just... It doesn't make sense when France is the number-two company. It does not make sense. We live in Pennsylvania. Let's prepare our students. Mandarin's great, but it's ranked 22. And I will send you the graphics, and if you haven't looked at that school board email, if you could please look at it, because I sent three emails, and I'm going to send another one. So please, if you could please look for those graphics, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So I just want to address the emails. So I get... You know, this is personally for me. I get sent a ton of emails from parents. It's my normal practice not to respond. We're a governing body, an oversight body. We are not the administrative team, and so generally, we pass it on to the administrative team. So it's not uncommon. I read emails all the time, and I don't respond. So it's not out of ignorance. It's sort of my preference not to get involved. Because... Actually, I lied. I sent one to one lady who called me a racist once. And that was the only time I ever sent an email specifically to somebody who addressed it to the entire board. So I appreciate the emails that come in. I read them. I think about them. But I don't necessarily respond to every single one, because I hear a lot of different issues, and there's a lot that, you know, we're not. It's not the board's decision. Sort of, it's administrative decision. So... But I think to go back to that discussion about French, then we ask for sort of a business plan around these kind of things so that we can make an educated decision from a financial standpoint. I understand there's a lot of passion around it, but I think that we have to be prudent with the money that we have. And not to say that it's not impossible to figure it out, because I agree with you. Anything's possible. I just think we have to do it with some due diligence and not jump into a pool that may be, you know, a quarter-full headfirst. So we just need to make sure we have our ducks in a row. And so... Because it's not only one teacher, one time. That's what we've talked about with regards to the strings program as well. So those are the discussions that we're having, and I welcome them at the other committee-level stuff that occurs.
Anybody else on the board want to add anything?
I was just gonna say, you do know we used to have French here, right? And when... When our kids went through... I think maybe our son was first. Yeah, well, I'll take French. We used to go to France and stuff. Yeah, I'll think I'll sign up for French. And then they didn't offer it because of lack of, you know, interest. So, you know, it waxes and wanes, and, you know, it's just was. We didn't fight the issue or fight about it. If you're really passionate about it, I would be working on a workaround plan. If we don't come up with something, and you're that passionate about it, it shouldn't stop you. This is just a school. Plenty of ways to learn. So I hope there's, you know, I'd be willing to put you in touch with... I know somebody who's like a French translator, and she might know friends who have ways to do tutoring and things like that. But there was French here a long time ago, and it's, you know, it's not here now. And there's not much we can do at this very second to flip the switch. So I'm...
Thank you for your passion. If there's no other public comment at this time, we're gonna move on. Motion to... So you got the student report, I believe, is next, right? Student Representatives Report. Brandon DiJ... Brianna DiJaco.
I would like to kick it off by introducing Brianna.
Please.
Brianna, as you recall from our tech board meeting last month, Brianna was the student of the month for the tech school, and she had a lot of her metalworking wares, artwork, metalworking wares. There you go. There's a picture. That's what I took on my... It was placed on my desk, and you see in the background is Ms. Hill at the tech school presenting Brianna with the award, the student of the month recognition certificate. And that's just a sample of what she does out there. And I just wanted to celebrate her and mix things up a little bit and bring a student in. And she's definitely earned our respect for her hard work out there and as a student. So Brianna, there you go.
Thank you. I really appreciate you inviting me to be part of this board meeting. I think it's made a great experience. I'm excited to be here. What I really wanted to focus on, like you said, was the Upper Bucks County Technical School and how important it is to tech students and students that go to the homeschool, the Quakertown High School. The tech school, it serves ninth to 12th grade. It didn't use to serve freshmen's, but now it's freshman, two seniors. There's 26 different programs: animal technology, cosmetology, welding, carpentry, everything, anything you probably think of. It's Penridge Polisades in Quakertown. All of these classes, they give students a trade they want to learn about, a field they want to go into. And it gives them an experience, and it prepares them for a further career once they graduate. It prepares them for their future, and it paves a road for them. Tech just... It doesn't just provide classes that they want to go to and something they're interested in. It can give a co-op position that can be given to them even before they graduate, a job position to earn money, to get more experience. And other than jobs, you can gain scholarships. I have gained a scholarship from competing in the Skills USA competition. I competed with my robot sculpture, and I placed 2nd at the state's competition for skills. And I obtained a $7,500 scholarship for Ohio Tech College. And I even asked a few students about their thoughts on the tech school that currently attend and what they liked most about. They were saying there are so many different options, and they have so many different doors. They have a freedom to pick what kind of classes they want to go to. All the teachers are really nice. The connection really grows. I've gained a great connection with my tech teacher, most down-to-earth teacher I've ever had. Other than just enjoying the classes and gaining a job or a scholarship, we also are able to gain a license or certifications in my class for free. Our senior year, we take NOKD testing, and we go through certification testing that if we pass, we are guaranteed 100% certification, a certified welder after graduation that can help guarantee a better job for us. And there's a big stereotype that goes around kids that don't go to the tech school. They say tech kids are lazy, and they just want less classes. But that's not really the case. It's trying to shuffle classes at the homeschool and then going through and taking the time, two, three hours in our day, to learn a trade that not many people would want to do, blue collar, trying to put labor into something. I'm maintaining a pretty good GPA, 3.5, and I'm learning a trade where only 2% women make up the field. And when I first began my freshman year at the tech school, I had... One of my peers, they said to me, "Aren't you gonna be scared to go into welding? Why would you want to do this? You're gonna be made fun of for being the only girl in your class." At first, I was the only girl. I do have another female in the class with me, but I don't hear any nasty comments. I not once had one person make fun of me. In fact, I get a lot of praise, a lot of respect for what I do. I'm really into the art aspect of it, and I think a lot of more people should know about the tech school and the opportunities it gives. There's a lot of doors that can be opened for the students. And it's not just for kids who want less classes. It's for kids who might not want to go to college right away and like a job where not many people would want to go out and do hard work and get their hands dirty. But I really think more students that don't go, they should be... Instead of just saying, "Oh, if you want to go to the tech school, you can," they should be given more tours, more educated about the different classes. Sure, it's not for everyone, but there's definitely a lot of students that really appreciate the tech school and really love it there. It's a great school, and it's a great part of the Quakertown High School. And a lot of the... The majority of the students at the tech school are Quakertown, and I think that says a lot about our school, that students are very dedicated, and they want to be hard-working individuals that really like being part of the community and the teachers. What I really have to say?
Brianna, I just want to say my daughter is at the tech school right now doing a tour, so... And the next time somebody suggests that tech school kids are lazy, just remind them, no, tech school kids are smarter, because they're gonna come out of high school earning 50K a year with no debt.
Exactly.
So thanks for that update. My daughter's also at the tech school, and she brought home the most delicious baked goods, so hopefully that continues. She's only in ninth grade, so...
Yeah, the baking and culinary, they always bring around food carts every Friday for the students in the baking. They'll open up their bakery, force students to come and purchase whatever they've made, and that helps raise money for different classes, other classes like healthcare. They'll sell strawberries or hoagies, and it raises money. It will raise money for their classes for new equipment that they need or any kind of new material that they would need for whatever program that they're in.
So now, your future with welding, is it in the arts, or would you like to do construction or...
I've thought about the arts, maybe as just a side project, something to do. But I've definitely put a lot of thought into becoming a welding instructor. My welding instructor has gotten me through a lot in the class, and he's taught me a lot of knowledgeable information. And he's inspired me to continue on in the field and even someday maybe take his position.
Cool.
What kind of welding do you like the best? Like MIG-TIG or stick?
I like... I prefer MIG welding. This sculpture, the robot sculpture, that was all mainly TIG welding. That's all used for that process. It's a really good process, because it's cleaner, but I prefer MIG welding.
So underwater welding is not in your future, but maybe teaching, where you can harness some of your art as well?
Yeah, I've thought about that, yeah. Underwater welding, it's... I don't know about being underwater. I would prefer to... I'm not really big on the travel either. If it's necessary, I would do it, but I'd like to stay in one place and stay in the industry with that.
I just want to thank you for talking so much about the tech school. I think it's very underrated and underutilized, although I am kind of partial as a person who went to tech and I'm on the joint operating committee, so thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Really appreciate it, absolutely.
Just one other question. Do they teach you guys stick welding too?
Yes, all of it.
Okay, that's good.
Our enrollment out there is up 25% over the last four years. Yeah, we make up 43% of the student body out there.
There isn't a lot of empty seats either, so...
We have about 100 to go, but we're gonna fill... I'm the superintendent of record this year, next year, as most of you, if not all of you, know. So we're working on some things. HVAC is a program they've never had, and there's a high demand for employees here in our community. And the companies here are very excited about that. We'll have that up and running next fall. So I think there's two or three new programs they're gonna have out there.
Thank you very much, Brianna.
Thank you.
President's Report. All right, that's me, isn't it? So I guess it looks like Stephen wanted to talk about... Or Dr. Harner sent a memo about preparing for the meeting schedules, and so we wanted to have some discussion about the possibility of going to one meeting a month rather than two meetings a month for 2019. And is this a roundtable discussion you'd like to have?
Yes, sir. At the next meeting, normally or usually always, the board approves the calendar year of meetings, not academic year, but calendar year of meetings in the schedule. In preparation of that, I asked across the IU, all the superintendents, what they do, and I put that in that matrix for you to see. Seven other... Of the 12 other districts have one meeting a month. That's just as a footnote, also the day of the week, because I know sometimes the day of the week is a challenge for some of you. And I'm just looking for feedback, or we can just keep status quo, whatever your preference. And I was looking for that discussion.
We had this discussion earlier this year and at that time. Some... I can't remember who initiated the conversation, but the suggestion was made to go to one meeting a month. My immediate, direct question to Dr. Harner was, "Can we?" You know, not "should we," but "can we?" And the answer at the time, and I'm assuming it's the same, is, "Yes, we can. We can do it." So as far as I'm concerned, it makes sense, a number of reasons. It's not a huge dollar savings, but I'm sure we'll save a couple pennies. And I'm sure my wife will love to see me home one more night a week, so I'm all in favor of it, frankly.
The "can" comes from the committee process. And when you're in one meeting a month, the committees have to do their work in preparation. Not that they haven't in the past, but it's when they're coming in and briefing out a position, like the finance committee or the facilities committee, that they're... That when they... Because it's made up of board members, and some board members, not even on the committee, come in for those meetings, that they're clout in those meetings, and they're bringing in recommendations to the full board, that they have... Generally have more clout in a process like that.
I mean, to me, it would make sense, because I feel like oftentimes with two meetings, our committee meetings get short-changed, and I think sometimes it would be better time spent in committees than that. And I would also think that would reduce the amount of preparation that administration has to do for a meeting.
This is... This topic is not for me. This is for the process and for what's best practice for you all, preferred practice, better way to put it.
I'm certainly in favor of it. I think we can get the same amount of work done and even if it's a slightly longer one, one meeting a month. And I would say if we need it, maybe around budget time to have more, you know, or be... Maybe it just means we're more likely to come to the finance meeting or something like that. So it's not like, you know, it would preclude us from having an extra meeting if we needed it, right?
I guess, just help me understand how we would accomplish that. We... I never... I feel like we never leave here very early. There's very few times where we get out of here early. So if we're already spending two hours... Or, excuse me, two times per month, and we're getting out of here late, how can we cover the same amount of information?
That's the beauty of it, because I think instead of that happening twice a month, it would at most happen once a month, and we'd force the issue to not make it go forever.
But we'd be in subcommittee meetings longer, so, you know, I think...
Who knows?
Part of the meetings... Our district is much larger than most of these on this list, of each once a month, you know? So that upfront, you know, it's capacity. We also need to make ourselves available to the community. And I think making ourselves to the community for a two- or three-hour window once a month may not be the best course of action. And there's a lot of decisions that are made every two weeks, for the most part.
Yeah.
And I just don't see the... I don't want to say I don't see the merit in it. I'd say I wish we could. I just don't feel that it's a very good idea. I think it makes us less available to the community, most importantly. And it's... The open discussion is the most important part of what we do. And there will be far less of that. And yeah, I think we'll be jamming two weeks' meeting into one meeting. And, you know, there may be midnight evenings, 11:30 at night, maybe later, to do things if it's a good, thick schedule. So, you know, personally, I don't find it to be the best idea.
What if we... So initially, you know, I was kind of... And I still... What if we, so initially, you know, I was kind of, and I still am kind of torn on, on the issue. David, I see your point and Kalen's point and I also see everybody else's point. And, and there may be a compromise. What if we look at, you know, during the busy months, doing two meetings a month?
Yeah.
But like if you look at Central Bucks, they have two meetings a month, but like November's one, December's one. Right. Right, so that's not ours. But, but like cutting it back when we don't need it and then, and ramping it up when we need it. So, I mean, I think that that's probably the best thing to do, because I think, you know, we were here in August, I think there was like one person in the, in the audience. So to David's point, we were open to the public, but.
But if the issue is to hold the meetings, quote unquote, when we need them, then the, then the, I don't understand what you're saying, like.
No, I'm saying we set that defined. We know when we're going to be busy.
Right, but I'm just saying that if we want to have a regular schedule, we can assume, you know, January, because that's the beginning of the budget negotiations, we can assume June, because we certainly have to wrap it up then. In the middle, we can pick and choose. But what I'm saying is, when we're worried about just normal workload, but we want to give ourselves the flexibility not to have that, I think one a month allows us to add a meeting when needed, rather than having two a month and then canceling them, because we just experienced somebody today who didn't know a meeting was canceled and they came. So if we decide we want to, you know, tighten our workload, again, I think we should advertise one a month and when there's a need to have a second one, then we post an advertisement and have the meeting. That's just my suggestion to your concern.
Yeah, I mean personally, I'd be hesitant to go to once a month flat out, just because of the amount of work that we've accomplished in each of the meetings and we, to your point, don't get out that early, especially with some of the renovations that are going on at Nighting and the conversations that are going to be held around that. And to David's point, I want more community participation and being able to talk and get those emotional topics and have, have people come out and talk to them. So I, I see your point of on the slower months, maybe one meeting, but once the school year starts, I think, I can't imagine one of the meetings that we've had so far this year that shouldn't have been had. So maybe like two months of the year, we'd go to one meeting or something? I meant additionally, you know?
We can sneak up on it. We can do something like that.
I like that.
I'd be compromised like that, but I mean, I do think we need to be readily available and the, and the subcommittee meetings need to be open and.
And I'm okay switching to days too.
So I think, I think that, but I think, so, so all the, all the subcommittee work is open to the public. They're, they're regularly accessed. They're generally not attended. But I would argue that, that certain ones do need a lot more time, finance being one of them. I feel like we are, you know, in there, gas pedal down for 40 minutes with our hair blown back and we don't really understand sort of what's going on. So I think we need to, that, that's why I think it would be, if you, if you wanted to go to one meeting a month, you'd really have to expand the committee work, which is likely where stuff should be taking place and then argued out here and then voted on.
Perhaps the one board meeting a month could be the second of our meetings and the, the Thursday, the current early meeting could be the committee meetings instead. That would give you the extra time on a, on a regularly scheduled day for committees that you could take long. You wouldn't have a board meeting coming up against you at a certain time. You could take that extra time. Just throwing that out at you.
I mean, another idea, just throwing that out here is, have we ever thought about making board meetings start at 7:30? I know that's kind of late, but to give committee people or to start committee meetings earlier to have more time? I, that, I know, I'm just, I don't, I, I think you're right probably, but I'm not sure. What else?
Well, I wouldn't be against, you know, making committee meetings a little bit longer, starting at 7:30. If there's more active work that's getting done at the committee meetings, I think that's important. And I understand your concern, Keith, about the finance committee meetings being really, really long. You can't really predict that you can do everything in 40 minutes. There's too much discussion to be had.
No, they're too short.
That's what I mean. But like, there's more work than time. And so, yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. And, and it's important work. So it's not something you just want to brush over.
So instead of having an extra meeting for a subcommittee meeting, we could keep to two times a month and just extend the committee meeting time? Or do you think that's too late to start?
That's the opposite of what everybody wanted to do.
You mean like starting later? Or just not having the two a month? I'm just saying, if you're going to come in, if the whole idea is that you're going to reduce it down to one meeting a month, but you're going to use that extra night that you've been here in a subcommittee meeting, means you're still going to be here twice a month and most of us are here at least that anyway. So if you could just add that, just shift away the, the time, I guess, right?
Yeah, but we, the sole focus of the committee is to discuss what the committee's about, right? And, and topics that pertain to that. So, you know, finding, I mean, facilities is one that sticks out in my mind, because it generally runs about an hour and a half. Sometimes it runs a little shorter, sometimes it runs a little longer, but there's really good discussion that goes on there.
So you're thinking not leaving it open to go farther?
I'm saying there are certain ones, I think, that need to, that need to probably have a little bit more attention paid to them. Finance, my committee being one of them.
Being like a completely separate meeting, is that what you're saying?
If it's a separate day, again, without dropping another meeting, that becomes cumbersome for people. So you, you know, to extend that meeting, because if you're like us, we're in financing facilities, you're already here one day, the beginning of the month, then you're here second week for this meeting, make it another week, I think you'll be here all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I like seeing you guys.
The issue then becomes, it, it doesn't sound like there's a giant consensus to,
to go to one, nor a giant consensus stated to, nor any, you know, earth shattering idea of how to make it all work. So do we want to just go status quo or do we want to step out on a ledge and make a change and see what happens?
When do we have to decide?
That's, that's my point.
Well, I think we just, the next, the December meeting is typically when we approve the calendar. So I would suggest that, yeah, right now, we only do one voting meeting a month and the other ones, I won't say fluff, but it's, it's for other things, right? So there actually is only one sort of critical meeting a month. So maybe, are we allowed to pass around some, you know, I'm thinking, somebody puts a straw man proposal. Here's like, like I need to see a picture of what's our calendar look like today, you know, for the year with one, one, two, 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 nothing, nothing, one, you know, for each month. And then we might go, hmm, compromise, like you're saying, Keith, and we'll take two out. Well, let's try with just reducing two of the months down to one, not.
We will have a paper copy to.
I don't need paper, I'm going digital.
There's a lot of different preferences that we come in with a, a paper copy for you all or something to put up on the screen that has what we have. And then you, you start looking at what are the routine things we have to do, like the budget, or the things that are going to be coming important that Craig Bolts or our new facilities director, when we hire one, that would need to have some votes on for the new construction, for the, from the facilities committee, where we need to have more time for dialogue because there are high expenditure items. Or in the fall, where we need to talk about, possibly talk about changes to the high school program and studies. So why don't we just do that next, next meeting and have that ready to go, then you can vote on a, at least a straw man.
Yeah, that would work.
And go from there. Thank you very much for the conversation.
Mr. Spear will be here, so he can vote too. And Vic as well, because they're at every meeting with us. It's kudos. I, I received your email about the elections that you sent out. Is that something that you could report on openly? I found it to be intriguing and amazingly awesome.
You mean the student vote? If you give us some time, Joe can find that and tee it up.
Alright, cool. I just think that, you know, in regards to the motion I had made earlier this year, being involved in civics, I thought it was a great enhancement of that and it kind of could show the community that we have been doing things like that.
Can we just go through the agenda and pick that up at new business and let's keep it moving?
That's fine with me, no problem.
She's sending you a copy.
Board meeting calendar. Motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda. Oh, approve Academy bus contract for the high school band trip to Orlando, Florida for 2019. Approve the rental agreement and invoice with Kenmark. And that is all. Any motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda is presented. Mr. Jackson, primary?
Second.
John Kern. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection, comment, discussion, rather? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Public comment on the facilities consent agenda. Are there any public comments about the facilities agenda? Facilities consent agenda, approve the contract negotiated by district administration with Amerex for the purchase of natural gas from December of 2018 through October of 2021 at a cost of 3.97 DCTH. Approve the authorization of administration to solicit bids for the projects on the attached list utilizing Dewey Engineering Services per the capital improvements plan proposal approved previously. All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda, facilities consent agenda. As presented. Second.
So what does DCTH stand for? Deck of what?
Deck of third.
Okay, alright.
Seems legit.
So did you all look at the capital projects? There's an attachment there?
Yeah, I had a question on it. So we're just authorizing to go out to bid and depending on where they come in with the estimated costs, the, the top six are falling with that million dollar capital budget for the year? Is that kind of what we're?
As your priority list and that's the dollar figure. Then as, if we.
If, if we, yes, sir. First, I wasn't on the speaker there, so. And you have the dollar figure, but we've been authorized. Also, if we complete the contract negotiations for the sale of the two, two buildings, we, we do have the, the funds left over to, to complete more projects, but that's for a future decision.
And then, I'm not familiar with the grandstands and ticket booth work that needs to be done.
It's to redo the, the two entrances and fix them up and redo them. And then there's a lot of things that have to be fixed on the visitor's side of the, the visitor bleachers and alumni field.
More like a safety and stability?
Craig, can you address any of that for us?
Okay. Is that the, the ranking order? Is that kind of the one through six, like number one is the number one item?
Yes, sir. They're in ranked order.
And then there was a comment about Dewey doing some work because there was money not spent on the Nighting. Can you expand on that piece of it? It was the last paragraph, that Dewey assisting in projects per capital maintenance proposal. When the Nighting project was shortened to 22 months, Dewey agreed to additional work for us at the credit.
That, that's to analyze. Come up here and speak please, so it's recorded. Thank you, Craig. We need you to be part of our streaming.
What happened was, when we bid, when we're doing the Nighting project and we decided that we were going to house kids at TV, that, that allowed the construction window to be shortened because they could attack the building everywhere at one time and not have to phase it. So as a result, Dewey's proposal was for the larger time period. And now shrinking it to 15 months means that their manpower won't be available or won't be needed on site as, as long. So there's savings to it. So as a result of that, we can use some of that time that they were going to put on the Nighting project to help design these projects and do a, a, a long range plan and rank projects based on the need.
It, it, what went on in facilities meetings is, to, to remind you, I think several of you were there at the meeting, that Jamie made a pitch or Zach made the pitch to do what Penrich had done with Dewey when they were doing their work, was to come in and analyze us to give, get into more specific granular detail. Four years ago, we had Schrader Group do that and, and they came in with an architect, engineering, architectural perspective and helped rank order our projects. Now this is getting down into the weeds for our different systems across all of our buildings.
Okay, so the 23-5 we approved last board meeting, that'll be drawn down from what you're talking about as far as the, didn't we vote on the Dewey to?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
Do the facility and or is a cost associated with that?
Yes, sir.
So is that just, that's going to be just applied as a credit? Is that pretty much?
Yes, sir.
So that money's already spent and they're just going to draw it down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's contract based, basically. What, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so it's not like time and materials thing. It's, we pay this one contracted amount, but since we're going to save, there, we're still paying them a certain amount in contract? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay. Go ahead.
I, I think Kalen's probably just wondering, so is this a, almost like a delivery order contract where, hey, we've got seven months sort of credit off of the original 22 already in the bank, so to speak. And if we, we can put other projects against that delivery in, in, in terms of, hey, can you scan some of our buildings and come up with some plans? And that's basically drawing down, I think, from an existing budget. But it's not freewheeling. It's not they get the money if they do nothing. It's, we're going to ask them to do something they bill for and we invoice them against the contract.
Actually, it sounds like it's already spent. So like, we pre-bought a bunch of hours and now they're not going to use as many hours as.
That's what I was trying to understand. So it's contract based, basically. So we agreed to pay a certain amount, but even though we, we make the changes from 22 to 15, which is going to be less resources needed, we are still responsible, but they've agreed to do other projects with that time. Okay, I'm tracking. Thank you.
More questions for maintenance, facilities?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion to approve the facilities consent agenda. All in favor?
Wait, wait, I do have one word. So I'm just, I'm just reading back to the minutes. The minute said last month that we, the facility committee, we were talking about, where is it? A scope and fee for long-term capital planning processes attached. The fee may include, may be included in the current Nighting Elementary School renovations addition agreement as construction duration has been reduced. Okay. So we did last month approve that based on, so why are we voting on it again?
You said that was the facilities committee, meeting minutes?
Well, this is different because this is recommending to go out to bid for some of these items. Not necessarily meaning we're going to actually move forward, but we're actually giving the administration permission to go out to bid.
We voted on the contract with Dewey last month. This month, we're looking at the projects to be approved for bidding.
Do we need to discuss anything about, something in here about Milford Middle School Demo, reallocating those funds?
I think it's premature.
Okay.
I, I like to hold that back and.
No problem.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the subjects? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Moving on. Public comment for the human resources agenda today. Anybody for open comment? No one signed up, I presume? Human resources consent agenda. Human resources consent agenda. I don't have to read through these, right? No? Okay. Motion to approve the?
Just the professional staff.
Oh, professional staff, supervisory and technology staff, support staff, unit pay, substitute staff. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Anyone now? No one wants to talk about this?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
The only question I have is about the unit pay. So that's an annual salary, right? So for instance, a coach, boys' basketball, all those.
Depends, depends on what it is.
Okay.
Some of it, it's a year-long responsibility, some of it, just a seasonal responsibility.
Okay.
Or activity responsibility.
Oh, that makes sense. So I feel like we approve some of these pretty much every board meeting. Is there a schedule in which we pay? I guess, is it because basketball season is coming and that's why we're basically? Okay. That makes sense.
And the athletic director, as an example, sends in an email to me for approval to be submitted to you all for final approval.
Because like I'm just jazz band, some of those things that I would.
That's a winter, winter, late, early spring activity.
I see.
Right after marching band's done, Frank and Joe move into jazz bands, middle school, high school level.
Got it. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Why is one of the yearbook positions prorated? Is it, is they're not expected to work as many hours?
So is a late comer to the program.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public comment on the Office of Teaching and Learning items presented for a vote. I mean, public comment. Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda, approve the service agreement for Title 2A equitable non-public service between QCSD and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22. Approval of the planned course statements as presented. Motion to approve the agenda, right? Unchanged?
As presented.
As presented.
So moved.
Second.
If there's no discussion, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on. All right. So we're going to move on to the information items. The proposed school calendar for the 2019-2020 year. Is there something here you know? Can we open this up for everybody or?
If you, if, for the new board members, newer board members, you weren't around officially on the board until?
December.
December. Nancy, would you please share how you create the calendar?
Sure. And this one is hot off the presses because we just met at the tech school yesterday. Mostly because of that we share a tech school, the three districts try to align their calendars. And so we meet at this time of year each year. We all have different contracts with our, with our teachers, so it, we have to do like a little horse trading to try to get everything to line up properly because we don't all have the same requirements for professional development days or things like that. And so the draft calendar that's in there reflects a calendar that has zero days when our students will miss tech school instruction because our calendars don't align. Because typically, if two districts are open, the tech school opens. If one district is open, the tech school is not open. So that's why we try to, try to align it. We have consistently followed a practice when Labor Day is early of starting the day after Labor Day, when Labor Day next year actually jumps to, I want to say the fourth because there's a leap year. But when Labor Day jumps next time, we're going to end up starting before Labor Day beginning in 2021. So all the days that are reflected are the ones that are required by the, by our bargaining unit agreements. So we would normally put that up for your approval next time, but I wanted you to see the draft.
Just out of curiosity from me as a parent, with Labor Day, like what's the reason for, if it's on the fifth or the sixth, not starting on the seventh? Does it add to the end of the year?
Yes. Yeah, it has to do with how late in the year we would end up going to school, especially if, as has happened in several past years, we have a lot of snow days. So like this next year's calendar, I think the last day is the 16th, assuming that we don't have very much snow. So otherwise, we could be into the last week in June. So that, that has been the practice. And all three districts have like agreed to it. So if we were going to make a change, we would want to all make a change in how we did that.
Okay. Yeah, just like I said, curious. I just, I like it starting after Labor Day, but I wasn't sure why.
Yeah, that's why.
Yep.
That's a, that's a killer winter break next year. It's pretty sweet.
And years when Christmas is on a Wednesday is actually the most difficult to get it all to come out right because it is most of two full weeks.
That was the joy of working in Russia because they did both calendars, the, our normal calendar, and then they would fall back to like the Gregorian or the, one of the two. So they would have double, double the holidays. It was brilliant.
So what are we doing with this calendar today? Are we just looking it over, just informational? We don't have to actually do anything with it? It's still a work in progress?
Correct. It's just informational and then it will be on the agenda for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
So it's just provided as an advance look. And if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
I think it's a good one this year.
It was, we must be getting better at it, the assistant superintendents that meet and do it, because we had almost no conflicts, like we anticipated what the other districts were going to do because it's what they did last year and we had very little to resolve. So.
All right. Consistency makes things easy. Any conversation, any additional conversation about the calendar for the time being?
Or? No, but I had a question more just in general with like the SRO reports and the suspension reports that we received. Is there like communication between the SROs and the guidance counselors as far as like what happened and is there trends or anything that can be done, like preventative, like they start to see kids at certain times of years acting out differently than they do other times a year or things that just happen and maybe a guidance counselor could help through communicating with the students for frustrations or, like I saw some of the report had said that there was like vandalism at the.
Something to property.
Yeah. I was just wondering, from a communication point of view, there's SRO and the guidance counselors, are they working together?
Normally, the school administration and the guidance counselors would be the first line of intervention. So it doesn't normally like start with the SRO and then flow to the guidance counselor. It would be the other way around. There also are some, some FERPA restrictions that prevent discussion of certain things with the SRO because they are not a school employee. So things like a student's special education status or whether or not they have a behavior plan or things like that are, FERPA is the Federal Educational Privacy Rights Act. I think I got all those letters right. So we have guidelines in place so that we're able to talk about critical needs without compromising student confidentiality of their, of certain aspects of their educational process. So it seems to be working well. I've been having meetings about every other month with the SROs and the principals involved so we can talk about the guidelines and, you know, is it working? Are there, are there problems? But, but normally by the time something gets to an SRO, it's already been through school administration and guidance and all the support services that, that are available. Does that help?
What would be helpful for me would be for these type of reports, if I could see trends, also historical trends. So for instance, I don't really have any way to know are, do we have behavior problems? Is it, you know, much more this year than it is previous years? To see some historicals would be helpful, I think.
I think you do have some of that in the board briefing book. In other words, that we provide you the suspension report, but I think in the board briefing book, there's more ability to see some of those, some of those trends.
On board docs, you mean?
Yeah. If that's not what you're looking for, then.
We'll send a link out to you tomorrow.
That'll be awesome. Thank you.
It is.
Okay, great.
Any other discussion on the suspension report or the enrollment report or the calendar? We can move on to the communications section and then I'm going to have Dr. Harner talk about student activity.
It's telling me right here, right?
Right. Communications, communication items, there's nothing on the agenda. So board comment, less opportunity for board comment open. And then if not, Dr. Harner, if you would talk about the election.
Okay. Joe, can you? Any?
Doesn't have to be long. I just thought everybody should know.
You have it teed up?
Is that something Chad puts together?
I'm going to ask Dr. Hoffman. It's her office that does this.
I sent you a second link. Okay. So Kids Voting was actually an organization that existed. We've been doing Kids Voting here for at least the last 16 years in midterms and in general elections. And the Kids Voting Organization, I think, kind of folded maybe about four years ago or so. So the IU picked that up for a short amount of time. And then after some conversations, it was determined that it would probably be easiest for individual districts to just keep doing it if they wanted to on their own. So Chad was kind enough to put together a, just a survey for us that we've been using the last couple of years. And this year, we added an additional question on there at Dr. Harner's request about what, whether students would prefer a traditional five-day schedule or a four-day week schedule with some longer hours. And so then we have a bunch of links on there too with how the actual results came out for the election and then how, how our students had, had voted. So if you want to scroll through a little bit, I don't feel like I need to read the elections. But it is interesting just to see, you know, what our students are thinking, what they're hearing at home or what they're hearing in class or from even, a lot of the students report that they got their information from ads on TV. So that's what they get there. Yeah, a few, I guess, if you, if you caught any of those. So it's, it's always interesting to see how they kind of, how they kind of fall out and hopefully having some rich conversations in their social studies classes about the importance of voting and. I don't know if you.
And the importance of there's more than two parties on their representative.
There are, there are more than two parties.
I'm making an impression.
There are.
I was surprised to see that.
Not to say we have always included all of the candidates. The balloted candidates are always available. So obviously, we can't, you know, account for write-ins or things like that.
Can you just talk briefly? You know, I don't want you guys to spend too much money on who got what votes or anything, but we were pretty, you know, our, our results for the students were pretty close, if not almost exact, with the, the actual way the elections came out, right?
Many of them were close, I think, in, in some of the, the larger elections where the names are a little more recognizable. They were even tighter. And so we've, we've seen, you know, I don't have exact trend data, but that seems to be pretty consistent with how it actually comes out in the end.
Would you just touch on the referendum real quick? What was your thought, Dr. Harner, Dr. Hoffman, about the way the referendum question came out about the four or five day?
Let's Dr. Harner answer that one.
Doc, Dr. Hoffman is trying to avoid that. It's an ongoing, every other week conversation in cabinet about this little underlying trend of four-day work week. There's a little whisper, four-day work week. You know, longer hours, but, or a longer school year. If you recall, I sent out an article that was in Education, no, Washington Post, story about Pueblo School District in Colorado, it's about 55, 60,000 students, I think, that size, a large district where they, they have a four-day work week. And there's a, there's 600 and some plus school districts across the country that have a four-day work week. And, and so it was just a fun question to see. And the students didn't want the four-day work week, they wanted a five-day work.
Yeah, but not by a huge margin, though.
That's, that's because they don't have like ski areas and, you know, it can't be like a ski bum.
But locally, we're.
People are relaxed in Colorado.
We're locked into a number of days, calendar year by code. So, I mean, if you want to go to a four-day week, we'd have to extend the school year.
It's by hours.
It's by hours?
By hours.
Okay.
So we could, we could do that. But it's interesting, out in Colorado, the, the districts who have not gone to the four-day work week are losing teachers, lots of teachers.
So I'm, I'm curious and I'm going to address the audience. So does anybody out, we're in a five-day work week now. How many of you would want to see a four-day, not work week, but a school day? Would that be better for parents and, and for teachers? What is the? Anybody would prefer that?
I just wonder how kids' attention spans would work in that long day.
What?
Kids' attention span.
The other thing is that you got, you have, you have parents that are not going to have a four-day, four-day work week, right? So you're going to have, you're going to have a huge childcare issue for a subset of people. And so I think it, I think it's all, it sounds awesome, but I think it'd be very complex.
Pract, it's not practical for lots of working families, is what your major concern.
I don't know that it's not. I'm just saying it's, it's a lot more complex. There's complexities that you have to consider.
I think you probably, it's like personal preference, too. Some people would rather do four longer days.
Well, I'm being asked to move this along, so if anyone else has anything really important.
Didn't Kern say that he was going to buy everyone drinks if we ended a meeting before what time?
Eight o'clock.
Oh, damn.
Important dates for board members. Coming up November 8th, which is today, there is, yeah, all right. December 6th, we have a facilities committee meeting and a regular voting meeting at 7:00 PM. And I did not do a final public comment, so I will do that if there is another one. Vic, you have the microphone.
Vic Bartholomew, and I'm from Milford Township. I'd just like to say that, I think you've been discussing, this mom and daughter come up here, talk about the French. And that kind of disappoints me that the, it seems to me, anyway, maybe I got the wrong impression, that the, the school board and the management here are kind of poo-poo in this idea when the latest two years, you raised our taxes to like 6.9% in two years. And you're going to sell the two, two buildings for $2 million. And you don't have the money to offer a French program. But it seems like, don't forget that it's, you represent Quaker Town Community School District. And the kids, just because they're not adults, they're part of this community. And they should have every opportunity to expand those horizons, if need be, to make themselves better. That's just what I feel, that's, that it should be done. I don't think, I, I can't see how you can't find the money to offer this when, if it was something else, you definitely would find the money. And something else, I get my, another thing as far as, what'd you say about redo, fixing up the alumni field? And this idea, when I worked here, I floated it out there. We have a very fine tech school and this young lady over here is a perfect example of it. Why not incorporate some of these people with their technical and skills to save us some money and work on buildings like, on the projects at, at the alumni field or anything else we have to do? These kids are trained and they're going to be certified or some of them might be. So, and with that money you save, you could put it somewhere else. You found the money to put a dance studio in for a few kids and now you say it's paying off. Well, now you got, no matter what it is, you should invest as much money as you can to find it for the kids. Because the kids are the future and they are part of this community. And they're going to become taxpayers and voters one day. So that's the way I feel. It just, it just hit my nerve and they are all part of the community and they should have equal representation and they should be able to get it. Thank you.
Dr. Hoffman, in regards to the French, I meant, I wrote this down earlier because I meant to ask. We got rid of the program that we reused in original. I meant to ask, we got rid of the program that we were using originally that allowed for online learning and such, like non-in-person learning. Do you think you could, could we pull a program like that? Self-learning, like a online course at least for French, maybe in the future? Is it a possibility?
I mean, the option exists in, in general. The costs vary and we'd have to be careful with what that request does. The reason that that was cut was because of how costly it was. Because allowing a student to take French means that we should allow a student to take any variety of online class that they would be interested in. And we also do have a current memorandum of understanding with the union in terms of which cyber classes we're going to offer so as not to provide opportunities that would otherwise be able to be had by a bargaining unit member. So there's a little bit more to look into for that. And again, it would be certainly a budget increase to, to bring back what we had saved in previous meetings from cutting that, so.
And again, by offering that one class, we kind of opened the doors to having to offer any class? Is that what you just said?
Right. So, like for instance, American Sign Language. When we did offer any languages, I think we had four students taking, I looked this up at the last meeting, four or five students taking French cyber. And we had almost 40 students taking American Sign Language as their, as their choice.
Seriously?
So, so if we brought world languages back to cyber, I think we had Japanese, we had Arabic, so a number of languages that we would probably need in fairness to be able to offer again.
And there was a curriculum with those courses, teachers behind the scenes, kind of, there was a pass/fail. Of course, it was on a credit card, not a credit card, rather, a report card, rather.
Sure, so those weren't taught by any of our teachers or through our district. We paid a third party for those. So what that curriculum looked like or what that teacher did was not something that my office controlled.
They got a grade for that class.
They got a grade and it went on their transcript, yes.
And you had said last board meeting, you just need some more time to get numbers together. Mrs. Henry's saying, these are the kids that were interested and enrolled. Did you have an opportunity to do that?
Right. So I did go back through the notes and it was actually, I think, in the May 10th meeting of last year that we discussed this at Education Committee and then the board directed me, which is in the notes from, from those meetings, to go ahead and move forward with not, not moving forward with French. So those, those notes would be available to you in there with all of the numbers. I think that the, and I certainly did, did receive the email also with the information. Mr. Pfeiffer isn't here for, for me to talk about where he got those numbers from. They don't match what I have in Power School, so it doesn't really pay necessarily, from my opinion, to go back and forth between where they came from. I don't have access to, to that information at this point, but the, how much it would cost us or what we thought at the time last May it would cost us to run this program is available. I can take a snippet of that and send it to you if you would like. And then the other piece that we have in there to remember is that if we do increase another language, then we are committing to furlough an existing teacher. Because if you're adding French, that means that students won't be taking a language that we already have. All of our languages are at pretty much teacher capacity. So if you figure that two classes where the students want to take French, then I need two classes less of another teacher. So just, that's outlined in that as well.
Well, that would be spread over multiple classes, over multiple teachers. So, you know, on average, losing three kids a class.
No, it's not really how it works when the year starts. So when we're going to actually go ahead and schedule a class, once we're starting, if you have 50 fewer kids and they're really only probably going to be coming from either German or Spanish is, is, you know, from our predictions where it came from, you would actually just schedule two full classes less. So if students were going to choose French one instead of Spanish one, then we would need, if you're using those numbers, we would need two French one classes. That means we would not need two Spanish one classes, for instance.
Prior to my arrival here, then, Ms. Edwards, if you would help me with this one, we only had high school world languages, we didn't have the middle school. And we had very few, or not a full teacher days worth of students taking German. So our German teacher was demoted to part-time. And that was on an annual basis. You see, I have the numbers, you don't have a full load, then they would be demoted. So we've built up our capacities right now, based on our middle school program, our elementary program for Spanish, we have three teachers committed to that.
Yes.
So.
So I just remember growing, you know, Ben, this is years ago when I was in middle school. You, you had to take like three months of Spanish, three months of French and several months of German. We had to take those classes. And then you could specialize in high school. That doesn't occur today? That sounds like they just go right to... You just have to pick one language.
Baptism by fire, pick one.
We go through sixth grade with Spanish. And then they get a chance to select one of the other languages or stay with Spanish. In seventh grade for our...
High performing.
High performing students. And then in eighth grade, if you're at the, at reading level or above, you get to pick a language. And if you're not at reading, reading level, eighth grade reading level, then you have a reading course.
And the decision to stop offering that survey class actually came from the World Language Department. And we're in talks now about the curriculum cycle and there really isn't an interest to bring back the survey class. I think that they found that it really didn't provide true instruction. So if you're only there, you know, every other day for a semester or marking period and you're trying to learn three languages, you're not really getting a full experience. And because we had determined that we were really lacking in the cultural geography area, learning about other cultures, learning about places in the world and where they exist, that was why that course was put in a couple of years ago, which is taught by a world language teacher.
Okay. I think that's it for this evening. I'm going to suggest we motion to adjourn. If there... All in favor? All opposed? Good night, everybody.